Complement of commissioners, this is Chair Catherine Harrington, joined by Vice Chair Pam Treese, Commissioners Jerry Willie, she's Commissioner too, Commissioners Jerry Willie, Jason Snyder and Nafisa Phi. We have a full day, well, we have a full list of topics. Hopefully, it won't take us all day today, but we shall see. So, we start with meeting kickoff and I need to ask your help in doing a little agenda problem solving first. I have a meeting with others, with the Governor at 11:00 a.m. And as I was looking, if the time wasn't set by me, and therefore, when I looked at the agenda last night, I was like, well, how the heck are you going to be in two places at once, presenting on topics? So, I don't know how to adjust that.
You're going to be in person or virtually?
No, I just have to walk across the hall and participate in that meeting, 11:00 to 11:30. Now, we may start a little, we may go through our topics one, two, three, pretty quickly, and therefore, be able to have a break, I don't know, between 11:00, 11:30 or so forth, but I can't quite, my brain can't figure it out yet, so I'm going to need your help. As around 10:30, if we can figure out what to do, that'd be great. I'm usually not this clueless about something.
You need to be out of the room from just before 11:00 to after 11:30.
Yeah, yeah. And Grace already got a conference room for Nick and I to do that. Why don't we just, we could also decide right now to break at 11:00, come back at 12:30, where it says here, and accommodate your meeting. And move that agenda item to after lunch, the 11:05 agenda item, or norm succession.
Start that at 12:30?
Yeah.
That just moves everything back a half an hour.
Yeah, then I have to keep you all longer. Well, let's.
We can do a status check and see where we're at.
Let's see where we're at, at 10:30. Okay, thank you, we'll figure it out. I also want to give you a heads up, a couple of things related to that meeting with the Governor. I need, I haven't put this in an email yet, so Kevin and ACA, because Ms. Angie is out of the room, and Alex. I would like to add a half hour exec session somewhere in the day, next Tuesday, the 17th. So, I just asked Clerk Moss, next Tuesday is a whopper of a day. So, I need you all, I beg your forgiveness, I need you all to set up your calendar so that we can meet between 9:00 and 5:00. We strive to be done at 4:00. I'm not sure we can do that. I think we're going to need to count on going till 5:00 o'clock next Tuesday, the 17th. That may necessitate, thank you, Ms. Angie, some adjustments with other meetings that night. All you have to do is look at the agenda for the board meeting, and we have the Housing Authority Board Meeting too, to see that we have 20 items on the consent agenda, 13 public hearings, just announcing them by title only takes time, let alone the action. Then, we have two items on the action agenda already, we know from our work session on Tuesday, we're going to have a third action item. And I haven't even looked at the latest roundtable agenda to remind myself of what's on the work session, but it looks like our staff's done an awesome job keeping the work session very light. So, you know, maybe, yeah, I'll leave it up to Kevin to sort out what time that short exec session will be. It'll be just another 30 minutes related to one of the exec sessions we had on Tuesday, and just a follow-up. Hopefully, easy, but we know with, with our brains, context switching on everything, we're going to need to have a few minutes just to sync up on what the topic is, then the particular reason for the exec session and direction on that. Okay. Those are the easy ones. So, in our packets, we got updated roundtable rolling agendas, too many Rs. Regular business, roundtable, rolling, okay, so in a normal year, we have this sprint through to adopted budget, then we have a bit of a lull. You know, we try to give everybody a break and not have a meeting the first week of July, and then we're sort of in the summer cadence in July and August before we have the jazam, take a deep breath right after Labor Day, the beginning of September, and then we sprint to the end of the year. That's not what this year's been like or going to be like at all. And we know, just based off of the actions we're having to take with the approved budget, getting to the adopted budget, that we have some organization adjustments which affect just our whole team operations here at Washington County, plus the work that we're having to do, making, doing analysis, discussing options, and really continuing as a One Washington County approach in ways that we haven't had to do so. In addition, the state legislature will be challenging us through their soon-to-be-approved budget in ways that cause my brain to go tilt. So, July and August are not going to be quiet months. And we have levy campaigns and presentations to make on top of that. So, go ahead.
Can I just add to that? I believe it was last week, and I apologize, I'm really losing track of time at this point, so we're going to pretend it was last week. Erin Doyle sent to your board an update on the state budget. We will also include this in, in the 17th budget presentation and will also talk about how we will be addressing the community corrections, budget reduction through the supplemental process. So, I do want to just remind the board, though, where we're at and connect to latest information. House Bill 5004 was just amended by the state legislature and now reflects a significantly reduced community corrections budget than what was introduced. To be clear, the amended budget does not reflect the Governor's recommended budget, nor the actual cost study conducted by the Department of Corrections that defines real operating costs and outlines the minimum budget requirements it takes to deliver safe and accountable rehabilitative supervision and support. The challenge in this case is this needs to be implemented by July 1st of this fiscal year. So, Nate Gauria and Erin Calvert and others have been working on how to make budget adjustments in a very short period of time. They, of course, have followed your budget principles and priorities. Some of that specific to the Department of Community Corrections includes defining the services. Community Corrections is statutorily mandated to provide through ORS and OAR, protecting the resources necessary to support staff being successful, well-trained, healthy and safe while performing their duties, evaluating funded services that can be consolidated, reduced, or that external partners may be able to assist with. So, you will hear more about this on Tuesday. High level, what this means is looking at workforce reduction, and so, Community Corrections is working with HR, Center, Community Correction Center capacity reduction, and looking at dissolving some of the other services and consolidating services within Community Corrections. The actual fiscal amount that we need to cut is just over $3 million. 2.4. 2.4 million, yeah.
Stunning.
May I ask a question, Chair?
Please.
Ms. Angie, will we, will we have a, an outline of what those cuts?
Yes, yes, we are working on getting that to you. This is just high level at this time, because this is moving fast.
Warp speed, I understand.
Yeah.
The question that I have is, we will have that, that list as part of the discussion about the supplemental budget work, is that correct?
Yes, we are not asking that you approve the amendment. That, this will not be in an amendment that you consider at budget. We are actually not ready to bring it forward as.
It'll be post our approval.
It will be, you will handle it during the fall supplemental, but we need to make the operational changes now. So, so we will make sure that you have clear information in your inboxes and also in the board packet prior to the 17th.
And on a, on a side note, I'd like to have a briefing just about, I, I understand where we were with the Governor's recommended budget, where we ended up. I, I'd just like to know, as we did our projections for this budget year, what were, what were we looking at in terms of the Governor's budget and where we end up?
Yeah.
I can, we can take this outline, I'd just like more information.
All of your questions, we will make sure that's written in written materials too, so that we're fully transparent and open. The budget is below our funding level last year, below.
Really disappointing.
And my question is related to understanding what we can expect into the future, frankly.
Is this, is this because of what we talked about the other day, about what the legislature is doing in anticipation of more federal cuts in funding? I mean, what's, why, why did they, why did they do this?
I don't know that we know enough yet to answer that question.
We, we will do our best to bring forward what information we know. Right, I want to be careful about speculating of any intentions.
Having to.
All spade is spade when it becomes.
We will.
100%, I do not want to misspeak for any other intent.
Truly, we're going to, we're, we're going to have to use all of our techniques. Issue letters, tell the public how the state disinvestment affects our local community public safety. At the same time that we've been trying to take steps to ensure that, because we know it is a Washington County community value. Make sure that our community knows that impact as a result of yet-to-be-completed state legislative action on their budget. I'm very concerned that some of our legislators are oversimplifying and saying, well, we have to fund education and we have to be prepared for impacts given the federal administration, and that's what we're doing. But at the cost of drawing local communities.
I don't think they understand what the, what the impacts of this are going to be and what they're placing at risk.
So, what is hard for me in this moment is we took steps over two years ago. It's why we put together, why this board directed that, we wanted that Public Safety and Justice White Paper. And our experts put a version of it together. We worked on it together, digesting it, coming back with questions, and closing on, not a version two, but a version three. And we spent time, set up forums for our state legislators to understand that. Of course, not all of them showed up, but we have been on this continuous public safety journey in all of its aspects, while they pop in and out. And this does affect our community, and we have to make sure they not only know it, but they feel it. And they may have interim ledge days.
I guess I'm going to ask a question of whether we need to reevaluate our public safety levy amount and support of this part of the program. I know we can't fix that, we can't, that's not for now discussion, but it makes me wonder whether that needs to be a discussion.
I, I had the same initial thought in my head as this topic was being raised, but the problem is, the state is just pushing down on us on multiple fronts, as though, well, you and local government should make up for this. At the same time that they have not been making the smaller changes to the property tax system. So, we've gone through this exercise before, and it's why we have retained the policy that the state has to fund their part.
I thought they had an obligation to fund this, I'll be honest, coming into this conversation. I know that there's, you know, there is the, the legislature has to fund or, or go through its budget process, but I didn't think this was optional. Like, I thought the, the way.
For the ORS, it isn't. Well, no, the study, they only have to accept the actual cost study. There's nothing in statute that binds them.
To fund it.
Fund, fund at that level. But what it goes back to is it breaks the agreement on the, the pre-release of adults in custody from prison to Community Corrections in the counties from a couple of decades ago. But there's nothing, they're, they're too far removed from that pain, right? They're not hearing from parents about public safety the way they hear from parents about education, right? We're not hearing them talk about public safety like they talk about early child development or public health for babies, right? Immunizations, omnibus, all that stuff. And that's where we're going to have to pull all the stops. Oh, wow. So, and it's, you know, it's also a little disappointing to me as in the last eight, 10 years, as Washington County legislators have moved into state legislative leadership position, how they've taken on more state view and state leadership at the expense of local community responsibility. And this is the.
Oh, something just for board awareness on this, and this is not a recommendation. I just want to make sure you're aware of options. Some counties have actually turned back parole and probation services to the state. That is not a recommended option if you talk to our department parole, our department, our department. So, I'm not advocating, I'm just letting you know. In addition, our Community Corrections Center is not a required service. However, it is a service that the county has historically prided itself in as we look at the full Public Safety and Justice continuum, and with a goal ultimately of reducing recidivism. So, just, it, it does work. So, I, I'm, once again, please don't take my comments as advocacy, they're, I'm just letting you know information.
But if they're not going to fund these things and we're having to reduce the services available through the center, then all the center ends up doing is housing is exercise that I'd like. It's, it's a thought that comes to my mind, and I want to make sure that I'm held accountable for that thought exercise with Erin Calvert and Nate Gowyran on what, what that means.
Yes, because without the center, there is a high potential. That means sending more individuals to, back to prison or back to jail and right into the system. And that is not a human-centered approach. It is not an approach that is proven to reduce recidivism, and it only increased the system cost collectively, both to the state, also counties.
So, I said somewhere, I think it might have been Tuesday, or no, I was in a meeting yesterday. There was an article in the Oregonian about how Jackson County is the one county that hasn't had to cut their budget this year. Jackson County no longer, has, has for years now not participated in AOC because of a philosophical problem around a a platform resolution for NACO. And yet, they benefit from the work that AOC does. What they did years ago, according to this article, the county administrator represented that they had to close all of their county libraries, and that saved them a lot of money. Yet still, this year, while they're able to put money in reserves, they're having to make layoffs, I think it's of their, their deputies, I think maybe just jail deputies versus patrol. And whoever I was talking with yesterday, I said, well, great, we'll hire them, we need them. You know, they're experienced, let's, let's get them relocated up here. Let's train them and let's get more of our jail pods open. That is a problem I want to have. And so, while we were having this non-scheduled discussion, I was thinking, well, are there any parole and probation officers that, like it or not, we, we have to give them the offer of, instead of having to let them go because of the state funding problem, see if they want to become jail deputies. But, I mean, this is a mess, sorry. I should stop thinking out loud, doesn't help anybody. Let's get the facts and then go from there. Well, so what does it mean, back to the rolling agenda? We've got big constructions, problems solving ahead. And I really like how we take a One Washington County approach and a One Clean Water Services approach between the DWS Board and leadership. So, July, if we look at July, as mentioned, we're not having board meetings that very first week. It means it puts pressure on our three remaining weeks. Commissioner Snyder will be on vacation through July 15th, which means any discussions and decisions we take at the July 8th business meeting, he won't be able to participate, so we'll be a commission of four for that, unavoidable. Oh, we have a business meeting on the 15th as well, so. Oh, it's the 8th, we don't have a business meeting. Okay, catch up, Catherine, catch up. So, it puts, it puts business meeting pressure on the 15th and the 22nd, where we're essentially taking whatever the normal four or three business meetings worth of work and cramming it into two. So, makes for slightly longer days. So, don't plan meetings that are going to affect your ability to stay till 5:00 o'clock on the 15th and the 22nd, please.
The 22nd, I know.
Yeah, yeah. So, I fully support everyone going on vacation. So, plan them, communicate what your plan is and take them. And that includes not just the leadership, county staff leadership that we work with each and every day, but all of our employees. Now, we're getting into August, and this is where I wanted to give everyone a heads up. Even though it looks kind of empty in August, September, the minute we get past the budget adoption, staff's going to, and things are a little bit clear in terms of what the key problems are we have to solve, things are going to fill up rapidly. So, we are going to have a lot of things that get programmed in. The good news is, none of us seem to be on vacation in August. I know Commissioner Willie, you'll be out at this juncture, August 4th, but I'm, do you have any idea if you'll be able to participate August 5th?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be able to.
Okay, terrific. So, we're going to go full steam ahead. We do, I would ask you to also pull out the roundtable plan. We do have a roundtable on August 14th. Then, then, and we, we're working out, the Vice Chair and I are meeting with CWS leadership, and we're working out the companion side on CWS. So, for, I flipped the page over to September, while we will not be having a Washington County Board Roundtable on, in September, we may have a CWS work session day, because of, or work session day, excuse me, because of the way things are coming up. Is Labor Day weekend, September 1st? Thank you, I forgot to double-check. So, September 2nd is where we have that gasp moment. So, hang on to your seat, folks. September's going to be wicked busy. I know I've got just a long weekend because of a family wedding. And Commissioner Willie's got some vacation plans as well. For WEFTEC, I believe that's Snyder and Phi, am I right on that?
Yeah, that's the plan. I, I was just wondering if we want to reevaluate our travel plans just grand day with all of the community questions that there have been, but perhaps not. I don't know that that's a discussion for now. I just, it was a note in my head of like, are we, are we still doing all the, whatever travel we had planned?
Well, we do know that we have staff members who need to participate because of the technical learnings and whatnot.
I have it planned, but.
And also, you're at the beginning of your term. And, yeah, I think it's, it's really smart. I don't know, Rick, who from leadership will be going. One thing that I think has helped each of us, I kind of wish I'd done it a second time for the reinforcement, but at the on the exhibit floor, being able to go from vendor to vendor to see the solutions. You know, sort of like with a CWS, you know, primary, secondary, tertiary. And the appreciation for that. You know, we're each different. I see it in the CIP, right? But having seen it on the exhibit floor helped bring the CIP to life for me.
And if I could add to that, it's not just seeing it on the on the exhibit floor, but it's working with Rick and Rick saying, this is about the investment on this location. This means that we could be able to do this. Here's the investment. Here's the return. So for me and I I that was that was incredibly.
Are you saying all saying I should go?
The best, yes, absolutely.
Definitely go.
What Rick says.
Well, yes, you should go. And yes, you should lean heavily into Rick and any other technical guidance. As you otherwise, you'll do what I did the first day was like, what am I doing here? Joey, there's just.
You can get lost on the exhibit floor.
That's.
It's days worth, but we'll we'll have it very focused to not only what's coming up and what you'll see in the CIP. But also we will tie it to future regulatory challenges and you'll get to hear about some of the the new stuff, you know, that's emerging and the technology readiness level. So I think it's been fantastic to have that opportunity to show things firsthand.
I hope you get to see the PFasigator. Which was.
All right, you've sold me. I guess I'm going.
And as much as I don't want to do it, I think we've it would be great if we just haven't emptied each art for October. Because we're going to have to start looking ahead. For scheduling there, which takes me back to the the roundtable plan. And we will need to have Washington County roundtables in October, November and December. Do you have any proposed dates yet for those months?
No, I will be coming back with proposed dates. So let me just decode what the chair and I have talked about. So as the board knows, my and reminder, my ICMA presidency year ends in October. And then I assume past president will still be some travel. ICMA has just named its president-elect and we will be meeting next week on travel. So Chair, I will have a better idea after that meeting and can work with you directly to get those.
Yes, so we'll we'll update. I'll I'll work with Ms. Angie and update the RT plan document. So we know what those dates are. But please know we're we're trying to work things out. And be mindful of you know, getting getting that process flow that this helped us really well in the past. And in November, being mindful of Commissioner Willie's annual, you know, 16th and beyond travel. And we do have both a CWS full work session day on the Friday, the 7th and November, December. The good news is this year in December, we have three Tuesday meetings. But remember, we have three different reviews, exec reviews, an annual for Ms. Angie, six month for our county council and six month for acting CEO GM if we are in that realm. So which means you all have to complete surveys no later than November. So. Yeah, it's a lot.
Well, and the the other thing that I we didn't mention in relationship to CWS is that underlying process that we'll be going through with the search.
Yep, yep.
With, you know, if we could just talk about July 8th, just on the rolling agenda. I know there's some discussion if we need a board meeting that day just for awareness. I am in Bend and I'm presenting on city county manager contracts and performance evaluations from 10 to 11. So I am happy to be available, you know, for a board meeting or work session, your needs on either time, you know, on before that or after that. But I'm scheduled for a presentation.
So I just wrote down no BCC 10 to 11.
Okay.
And Ms. Ober and I talked about this yesterday and we're trying to figure out a little bit of timing.
Yep.
Yeah, so we just don't know enough to pull that lever.
100%. I do want you to be aware.
That may be something after. We may know more next Tuesday before I leave on vacation, but there may be some problem solving that the vice chair will need to handle. But we also do have the board meetings on the 15th and the 22nd as well. So. No, go for it.
I'm well, I'm just looking again at the end of September and the 30th is a fifth Tuesday in it. There's nothing on my calendar that.
Yeah, we don't usually have meetings on the fifth Tuesday.
Yeah. So I just wondered if we had changed that. So.
No, no, we're taking advantage of all four Tuesdays. We do have.
Okay, all right.
The times that we've had to use the fifth Tuesday is when we haven't had the other Tuesdays.
Yeah, okay.
I try to not inflict that much pain on you.
Thank you.
Like, no, I don't want us to have meetings that we don't need to have. And I just don't see the need yet. So hopefully we will. So we do have. I'm just gonna anything else with regard to rolling agendas? So I know I have to think about going back east to see my mom. So I have to figure out how what after September vacation plans may be for me to accomplish that. But I'm trying to get these roundtable needs and sense of problem solving done before I plan that. So that's where it's going to help me to have some of these needs sorted out. So I'm not going to do anything more on that until July. Okay, so now we're going to segue to topic two. Big topics for second half. So this is where this document was once again in your packet. Not because I want to look out to 2030, but some of the effects of what's been going on at the state level and the very big lifts and the foundation building that we've been doing require us to look that far. But some of this I need to affirm is on our plate. So about the fourth row down, the CCICPO RNO update. This is where we'd put a pause on the aligning, the the RNO, modernizing the RNO from the 1986 one and making sure that we were setting the CPOs up to do the needed advisement that we need from the board. And we put a pause on that until after budget. So I'm keeping it on the list because we need to sort that out before the end of the calendar year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for affirming it still on the list. And so this is this is that list we're going to be populating out. And it may just be that at one of our work sessions in July, since we're not having a roundtable, we just have workflow planning. We're moving all without haste with 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 undue haste, I think, is the expression on our levy work. In order to address the needs of our community, as our community members expect, we need to put those two levy referrals before them and do all the campaign work related to that. That next line, PS and J persistent problems. This is my polite way of reminding myself that all kinds of stuff is happening at the state level that has downstream effects. Yeah. Hats off once again to our behavioral health team in getting the Hillsborough and Beaverton Recovery Centers opening opened. And to everyone related to public safety and justice for the work you do each and every day. We do, we will need to sync up post-budget on the plan for expanding the jail and where we stand for that with that.
Chair, if I may, it hasn't hit your roundtable document or your rolling agenda, excuse me, document yet. But we are anticipating having a work session discussion on August 12th.
Oh, great.
Which will include Matrix Consulting, who is the consulting firm that we've contracted with for this process. Some more to come.
Great. So I'd like to ask you a question about this line, the CAT opening. It's the CAT opening, which is appropriate here for these two things. I'd like to us to consider the CAT opening and follow up so that so that.
The first year of operating.
Yes, so that we are really well versed in how things are going, anticipating any issues and just continuing with the success of the CAT. For me, the success is certainly the opening, but it's also how it operates and how it's embedded in all of the processes in our county.
What it's doing for people.
You've got it.
So I think that would be a good work session. If you could come in and talk about that.
Marnie has caught that ball and we'll work with the.
Yep. And this is why we go over stuff like this. So thank you. So we'll see if the state chooses or not to provide for planning dollars for courthouse planning. Then we know, no matter what happens with the state transportation bill, that we're already required to do things for the transportation funding here in Washington County. And so I leveraged out of the the work plan from our team, what the milestones are there with touchpoints. So not forgetting that there's there's touchpoint on phase three and phase four. Then we also know there are several LUT ordinances in the queue. Now you can see these items are marked in yellow and that's because it isn't a simple matter of it showing up on the rolling agenda. Right? Recognizing that this work has political downstream effects to us and engagement, which is why it's on the list. So.
Yep, if I'm sure since the time that this list was created, the one item that your board has directed staff to work through is revenue options. So the transportation strategy is is a component of that revenue work of Marina. So I as I scan this list, I just see that it's missing.
Yep, yep. Thank you very much. Okey dokey. Then, of course, we have the ever draining Metro SHS reform. And under emerging issues, staff will be coming back to us on next steps with the Washington County Museum. Then we already have, I need to find a better federal expectations. Is the other emerging issue that we've already had. Yep, work going on and board discussion, excuse me, board discussions, and those will continue. And those are a bit draining. On the SHS front, our team has done such a phenomenal job on the year four delivery. We're with the end of the fiscal year, that is the year four implementation year. And so with the new fiscal year, it'll be the launch of year five. And our staff continues to do an awesome job and problem solving. We've got a couple of pod villages where we had committed to the community that they would only be in place for a couple of years. And so now the couple of years has come due. We have definitely proven that they are effective solutions and the way we have the management plan working with our service partners. They are not disruptive to neighborhoods. So we just need to go to the next, the next phase of on the ground solutions. But the Metro Council is definitely moving forward with reform measures that don't require voter approval as well as moving forward with a ballot item in November. We'll see if they pull that lever back.
But they still think they're on track for November.
Yep.
Of this of this year.
Correct. Yep. The same time that they say no decisions have been made. I'm not able to talk out of both sides of my mouth. I have just enough trouble talking out of one part of my mouth. So there you have it. So yeah, we're hopping busy doing awesome work for our community. And I'm not getting sleep. So I'll solve that at some point. Oh, sorry, there is my laundry list here. When we in our roundtables earlier this year, we talked about our budget process. We had additional forums for our community members. We had a couple of forums for our elected officials. And we left a to be decided item on the list of after we adopt this budget and have further clarity with regard to potential federal funding, potential state funding and our own choices. Do we want to have a board town hall, a budget community forum to lay out for our community? Yes, we have had to make the very adult decisions to reduce services.
This would basically be like where we ended up.
Yep.
I like that idea. Yep.
So there's hold that thought for a second because we also have the opportunity of the state of the county. And I think one.
This is the state of the county, isn't it?
No, 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 they're separate things, but it's the timing of them that I'm trying to figure out. I don't think I, you know, the budget community forum. September feels right to me because people are on vacation in August. But if we wanted to try it in August, we could. But.
Have you thought, what do you think about combining them?
They're very different in terms of tone and interaction. So what I'm wondering about is have the state of the county the very end of September or even as late as the first week of October and have the community budget forum sometime in the early part of September. So I wanted to plant that seed. Well, obviously, we don't have a roundtable in July, so we'll have to just come back to it. It works. Does that seem reasonable? Okay. Because each of them requires staff support, so. And the other thing, you all, I really suggest that you take a look at the both, or either the Forest Grove State of the County or the Tigered State of the County and the way it's done in terms of, you know, pre-recorded.
State of the City.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think, so was I, but.
Yeah. Holy smokes. Sleep, lack of sleep just kills me. Yeah, yeah. Forest Grove is now a county. Melinda might be surprised by that, the mayor. So, yeah. Just have a look before, and we might have to close on this topic on a Tuesday before the 15th, so.
So there's one other issue. We talked about Metro and released.
One? Optimism. I'm not feeling optimistic at the moment.
Pollyanna, Pollyanna Pam. The, I, I, I was appreciative of a phone call I received last night from Counselor Gonzalez at Metro that their future vision commission has been selected. It's going to be announced. And I, I was not selected to be on.
Neither was I.
Okay. I, and so in some respects, that relieves us for, from a responsibility, but it also puts us into a position of making sure that we are aware and engaged in the process that they are looking at for.
I think they need to figure out how they're going to engage their local government partners in that. If current process is any indication, they're planning nothing.
Well, I think, frankly, in all transparency, I just sent a team's message to Jason that he didn't catch that said, were you selected? Because before I brought this up, but.
I'm not on my device.
There you go. Well, I, I just, because I didn't want to make it awkward. But nonetheless, I do think that that is an indicator to your point that if there's no.
To be engaged.
If there's no.
There's one, I asked the question, there's one elected official from the entire County, Washington County area.
Do you know who that is?
I do.
Okay, I did not.
But I don't think, only because I asked and I want to let them announce it today.
And I.
It's someone from the city.
I did not talk to Juan Carlos. I only got a message from him. So that's why I didn't have the engagement. Okay. But that, but that does tell.
The rest of the commission, all, or the future vision commission, all young people the way they had originally intended it.
I don't, I haven't seen this. They were supposed to announce it today. That's my understanding. Jason, is that yours?
Yes, it may be up now. I don't know, but.
I just checked it. I didn't.
I was very disappointed when, in my one-on-one with him, I discussed, I shared with him how Metro had put together the 2040, the original 50-year vision, 2040 growth concept. It was the foundation of the RUGOs and the regional framework plan, all those foundational elements. But he had no idea of the level of community engagement. And this was all pre-internet, you know, family household surveys and, and whatnot. And to have a Metro counselor be so uneducated in terms of how they're original, this is just, this future vision is their second growth concept is really just stunning. I don't know what you're looking at.
Oh, the future vision report from 1995?
Yeah. So, yeah. Anyway, not a Metro I recognize. So, okay. Well, without further ado, I made us five minutes late. Scope of staff assistance, service level to B C C members and board budget. Welcome. And I had the material in advance. Yay. How much did I remember is the problem.
Hi, Anna Ober. I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators here. We're here today to talk about a document that Erin Doyle has worked on for a long time. Really appreciated her leadership and then also to talk about budget for the office now that we're approving the budget. So with that, Erin.
Thank you and good morning, commissioners. And thank you for letting me do a PowerPoint during a roundtable. I don't know how to function without one apparently anymore. So as.
It works for us.
Yeah. So in the packet, the memo that was sent to your board in May was included. So you have the more robust amount of words that commission really likes to point out, I think I get paid by. But also the PowerPoint really lifting up some of those key pieces. So what we are hoping for today is you've seen that memo, you've read it, you've all had input into that document as we went through multiple iterations of it. But as you all are aboard and work with your staff assistants, and the staff assistants are a team of three that are intended to support all five of you. And any one of them could be supporting you at any given time because we do allow them to take vacations despite how idle of a resource they are for you all. But we want to make sure that there is agreement and conversation amongst your board that those expectations are the correct expectations and that it's meeting the needs that you have as commissioners. So.
Don't worry, I have questions.
Excellent. Glad. I will also try to talk less, which will be a challenge this morning. So I want you to hear from each other about what your challenges, your concerns, your hopes, your ideas, expectations are for staff assistance work. And then have you have the space to have a discussion about what those expectations mean to you and commit to each other that these expectations are shared and affirm that as the staff assistance team continues to work together in support of all of you, that you will work with the same expectations for support. As I stated, any one of them can support any one of you. That's the goal for my, for, for this team. And hopefully for all of you. We are so lucky with this team and the team that have come, the teams that have come before to set groundwork, to create structure to these positions to help us understand what it is that all of you need. But when one of them's out, someone needs to be able to pick it up and they are doing that. So, and then at any given time, if needs must, we will reexamine those assignments. And we want to make sure that anyone who's assigned to you to provide you the support that you need is meeting the same basic levels of expectations. So to start this, this discussion, I wanted to kind of focus in on four main principles. First, the staff assistants are a resource provided by the county to you to support your work and goals in setting the course for the county. And they do work in coordination with Clean Water Services Executive Membership to help with the scheduling, to make sure that you aren't supposed to be both the Clean Water Services Board of Director in, at the same time that you're a county commissioner in two separate meetings. That seems less than ideal. So that in and of itself is what they're here for, is to provide that resource as one of the, one of the many subject matter experts that you have here at the county to provide you that support. The second is that we know that we have structured the support structure for commissioners differently than every other county has, every other city has. We all do everything differently because as the saying goes, you've seen one county, you've seen one county. And as a result, we don't have individuals for each of you and instead they are a shared resource. So as they move forward, we want to make sure that none of you gets to hog their time. And instead, the balance of their time is proportional to the, the number of commissioners they're assigned to support. Watching those two over there, carefully quoting language.
But this is, we've got staff assistants in black back here.
Yeah. They are ordinarily coordinated. But they did this on purpose, but they are the shadow that moves behind all of you and picks up everything that. So there you go. Yet today you get attention. I'm sorry. The, the third piece is like all staff that are not directly hired by your commissioners. They are managed through the management process. I am their manager as C A O. Angie has assigned that task to me as part of her responsibilities as the C A O. And then finally, one key commitment, staff assistants are not to work on personal or political matters. We understand that you have lives outside of your role as Board of Commissioners and Board of Directors and that you serve inherently in political positions because you are elected. So when we say personal or political matters, we can hold, they can hold time for you to be those parts of yourselves, but they are not to be doing substantive work related to either of those things. They can obviously set up appointments with legislators. That's not what we're considering with, as political matters. But anything related to your outside political endeavors is not their responsibility, nor can they be asked to do that on, on county time. So those are the first four principles. I'm seeing head nods. I'm seeing nobody saying anything terribly shocked by these. So I will take that as a moment to move on until someone asks me a question.
I hope we get feedback or somehow messing the mark on something.
Yes, that is my hope here too. While that may, document exists, it is yours to help me amend as we continue to move forward. And as we are still working with Clean Water Services to create clarity of communication, making sure that both schedules are working. We had a very productive meeting with Clean Water Services yesterday as part of that. So there will be changes. Nothing, we are an ever-learning organization and we will continue to do that.
I, I had that similar thought, but then I, I caught myself and reminded myself that, well, let's see. Miss Angie, the A C As, Anna Ober in this case, and Erin Doyle in this case, haven't told me I'm doing anything wrong yet. So I must be doing okay.
Yep.
Yep. I know they have an invitation. And on the converse side, I want to say that we have a rock star A C A team as well, also with county council. I mean, I know if I need help on something, I can always find somebody. And that, that situation doesn't exist in every local government. And I mean, it won Washington County all the way. So, thank you.
The other, the other thing I'd like, I think the chair mentioned, she can always find somebody if she needs somebody. The other thing I appreciation, I appreciate is the fluidity, I mean, of, of this group. And if I'm choking on the, on a presentation, Bryn can walk in with a glass of water. Thank you very much. Because Maida called her from both places to tell her, I think the commissioner is dying. And I, as I was trying to recover and looked up and there's Bryn with a glass of water. But that does speak to that, that, that fluidity of purpose. And I, I, I recognize it and I appreciate it.
So can I just jump on that? I want to actually give a shout out to Erin Doyle and her leadership into the team because it has been so great to see that team come together as a team and support each other and celebrate each other. And honestly, those are the times that just, it warms my heart to see them flourish. So thank you to all of you.
Oh, they're going to be so uncomfortable by this. So there, there are five bullet points. It makes it seem like their job is pretty simple. I think you all know, but that's not accurate. But these are the five primary things that staff assistants are expected to do as part of.
Calendering, big load.
Yeah.
How is he supported? Big load.
I don't know. You guys are busy people. So in calendaring, again, the slide is simple. The work is incredibly hard. This is where making sure that there's coordination between the county and Clean Water Services calendars is vital. We are solidifying that, making sure that that level of communication is clear and direct and also serves you with the information needs that you have. So there are things that they can do. They get a green thumbs up. There are things that they cannot do. And again, that does not mean they can't hold space on your calendar. This is where we use those fancy words like hold, private. And just hold off your blocks of time. They are better at outlook than I am. So they know how to do all these things. But we've also established some appointment formats that are expected to be used unless they are anathema to your needs and processing. But we are instituting this not just for your calendars, but across the C A O office because you led as an example in this instance, as your staff assistants have created this format with, you know, who is the person in charge of this appointment, hold? What are the details so that you have the information? If there's an internal contact, an external contact. So that way, if you're out in the fields and trying to find the driveway, you have someone to call when the parking lot is very hidden.
I think they led on that. I don't think we have a.
Yeah.
Format to be, give the credit where.
Yes. Sorry if I, I meant to say that. It, it's worked from one commissioner out to others as we have worked together as a team. And then also making sure that you have the documents and other resources that you need. And then the other thing that's important in their calendaring that they do is making sure that everybody knows. Because you are public officials with public calendars, but also need to know what each other up to. They have been working together to create that weekly B C C external calendar, the expectations that you have set as a board. And then making sure Clerk Moss knows where you all are, so he knows if he has a quorum or not. Adding that, that information, those out of office plate times into the rolling calendar. There's a lot that comes through this, but as we set, continue to set these expectations, the one expectation I have of you as board members in this process is to not just randomly calendar yourself and not let your staff assistants know directly. It makes it hard when they then rearrange all your things. So.
Yeah. Could I get clarity on that? Because I think, I think you may be talking about calendaring ourselves over in, in a conflict situation. Because I do calendar myself.
Yeah.
So that it, it helps block a time so that there isn't confusion. I.
I mean, without telling them that you're setting up an appointment and asking them for the hold. So you can calendar yourself as much as possible so long as you court, tell your staff assistants that they need that space, that hold. So if you're setting up your personal doctor's appointment, you just say, Maida, I need this hour, these hours held on my calendar.
Well, here's another example. Grace, I added a calendar event for day bloody blah. Sometimes I send her a text. Sometimes I send her an email and all I can say is calendar check this day.
Okay.
I, sometimes, I don't, I just don't have time to say it's this time, this purpose. All I can say is it changed this day.
Check it.
Yeah. So there, it's the breadcrumb moment.
Yeah. And that's just so we know that your calendar is up to date. We all know that you're perfectly capable of, you know, scheduling yourself to some extent, but they're really.
Not in all instances, I'm not.
I mean, I forget travel time all the time, but. So that's, that's the request is that there's that line of communication, which I know you're establishing.
And calendaring is, it is not just in outlook. I, I'm in situations all the time where I'm being asked to problem-solve board availability. This is why all of you, and I meant to bring a handout to show you, all of you need to make, because our calendars by state law are public, you need to set your settings. You need to set your settings so that they are visible. And I can see when I'm working with staff or AOC on board representation for an event. That you're, why are you not available? So I can make that quick judgment call on, are you going to be the name that I advance to cover a topic? And right now, you're not all up to snuff, so you're not getting those opportunities. So fix it, fix it now. Hopefully over lunch, I'll have a chance to get that handy dandy guide back together so it can be fixed. So, sorry.
To your conversations. Yep. The next big thing that staff assistants are expected to do is provide policy support for each of you. These are some examples of how that works that were laid out. And I'm also going to say sometimes I present things to you that you already know, but I'm hoping the rest of county staff is listening as well. Or at least the department heads are reading the materials. Obviously, they are your support structure for external committees that work in tandem with all of the subject matter experts of the, of the county. So I know that those of you who serve on J-Pact and M-Pact. Your staff assistant is working with LUT to make sure that in combination, they're getting you the resources. The time and the in-meeting support that you need. We are working towards not over staffing with like three staff there to support each commissioner in every meeting. Maybe you only need one or two, but you also need to know how to get ahold of them. And that is the work that the staff assistants are doing. And then the other big thing is as you're in those external committee meetings, if you have your staff assistant there. They are tracking for you what you've promised to break back. Or things that clearly are questions, you need to make sure that that committee gets information back to you. The other big area where staff assistants are expected to create this policy support for you is in preparation for your work here as a commission. So they're looking at the rolling agenda. They should be setting up conversations with you to figure out where you need briefings beforehand. Where you need briefings after a work session because new questions have arisen. Just sending out those emails to the subject matter experts. And then making sure the county leadership, so Tanya, the ACAs, our chief financial officer. All of those folks can get you the information that you need. Making sure that if there are big policy questions, you're being asked to deliberate, that you have the resources you need when you need them. But also if there's going to be, you know, like everybody is super concerned about the conversation. Making sure that you have the opportunity to have that right conversation with each other as you set the, the county's policy decision. Or make the policy decisions for the county and set the direction for, for staff work. So this is really about them becoming an avenue of communication for you with the subject matter experts and the county leadership. So I want to pause there to make sure that there's comfort with that and understanding that, you know, sometimes they're just gonna go and ask people on your behalf because you posed a question to them. And that's an expectation we're setting for them.
I really appreciated the phrase you just used, avenue of communication. And I'll prime the pump here. It's going really well for me. I, I don't, I really appreciate how for a topic area. A, an ACA or a department manager will send us a heads up email with a brief summary of the topic that's coming. A report may be attached or not, or a memo or something, and let us know if you need a briefing. I try to read those right away and judge, okay, Grace, I'm definitely gonna need one. Or I think I'm gonna be okay just reading the document. Or yeah, no, I'm good. And for me, that's going really, really well. I appreciate the not over staffing because this stuff is real. And there's lots of stuff right now. And it's just in order to remain a person and deal with it all. Sometimes I just need to minimize the number of people that I'm interacting with on pressure points. But I, I have a great deal of confidence and faith in staff across the board. But I feel that I can do the work with any of the policy assistants on topics that are politically sensitive to me. So, and all of that is my very long-winded way of saying, what an excellent team. With the staff assistants across the leadership team, across the organization. And I really appreciate all of the hard work that's gone into trying to be efficient and successful. The and successful part is really important. So, thank you.
I just, in full transparency, I struggle a little bit with, at times remembering that Bryn is. Like I'm not used to having this level of support, so sometimes I forget to either ask or have them help with follow-up, but I, I'm getting better at it and they've done a good job of getting. There've been some recent examples where it's, where I've been able to do what I was supposed to do, so I'm. I'm getting better, but I, I just want to acknowledge that I, you know, there, there have been, in the first few months, I was kind of like, oh yeah, that's what I should have done. And so I'm, I'm working on it.
We'll keep overloading your calendar so you don't have time to do anything else.
I, I, I'll jump, jump in here. Erin, you, you and Erin did a magnificent work on this. I think when you got this team adopted. For your promotion, this leadership role. I think you created a really good structure and a structure that's gonna last a long time for this county. And a structure that was very well needed. So I want to commend you both. And this is not the first time you've come into us to speak to us on this topic. We've had a briefings and gave you some of our thinking. But when I read your document, your memo, one of the things that really resonated with me and how I, how I utilize the staff here is this slide really. Yes, there are other duties assigned. And yes, there's a lot of other commissioners that they're supporting. And yes, they're also doing their own, you know, work for the county. Other duties is assigned as I learned to embrace that concept or that terminology. But this slide really spoke to me and how I utilize our staff. There have been a tremendous help. My mission to be an effective commissioner, the slide really spoke to me and it spoke to the effectiveness thus far. And it also made me sort of have an aha moment. When I do introduce our staff, I usually just say, oh yeah, this is our, my policy support, oh, my policy person. So I just wanted to just throw it out there to, for professional development and whatnot. Perhaps we need to change the title to policy staff or, because I think of policy is where I felt like I was especially new to the county. Because it's not just coordinating, like for me, the way I use, it's also like sometimes having one-on-one conversation and say, I, this is how I'm digesting this topic. Give me your perspective. And having that really perspective taking. So this, all that to say, this really spoke to me, the policy support part. Because, you know, the, the staff are highly, highly qualified and well-educated and highly compensated.
So let me, we've kind of explored this Commissioner Phi. And just as we've gone through transitions of staff assistance, feedback from staff assistants. And titles and perception of titles help say what the work is going to be. So there has been disappointment, I'll just say, from, or we've seen through interview process, individuals who have applied. And when you say policy assistant, there is an assumption that that's all they're going to do is policy development and policy work. And so then we've seen, well, that's not what I signed up for, the calendaring. I want to actually just work on policy development. So we've really worked on the job description, what the interview process is. So that it's eyes wide open, both for the candidate standpoint and also it's successful for you. The other real is I want to remind your board that I am your direct report. So for policy considerations, I'm encouraging you should be having those conversations with me as well. And also the, the ACAs. So we've done a lot of work internal, like just how do we even ask questions in the interview process? Because it is, it is really hard for new employees if they start and all of a sudden the job is not what they thought it was going to be. So I appreciate what you're saying and I'm kind of providing an and to that.
I appreciate that. You and the three ACAs, you've been a tremendous guy. You've been providing tremendous guidance and policy and yes, I think. I flush it, make sure that I know my curiosity questions and then I run to you or to you. So I appreciate that.
The other best practice I'd like to mention is that I've heard my colleagues to my right over here individually in forums say time and time again. And this is the staff assistant for myself and the other one of the two. So it's very clear to everyone, it is a shared resource. And I think that I want to commend you for that best practice. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that conversation. The last bullet point on this is, I think to CEO Angie's point. If you have new concepts that are policy ideas that are new to the board, for the board to prep, to have a conversation about if that's the direction. Those are really moments for Ms. Angie to have the first cut at whether or not that's something we can find the time within the limited scope and capacity of employees. Also, ACAs know if that's something we're already working on. So that, that's really where we hope that first conversation takes place. And then Tanya can talk to me about talking to staff assistants, or talk directly to staff assistants or to the ACA. So we get you the best and any, if we have available resource to do it at the county level. So that's the final point I wanted to make really clear on that.
And I actually just want to amend this slightly. And it's, I actually haven't seen this here, but I have seen it elsewhere, so I just wanted to put an and on that as well. Sometimes it's not a new policy concept. Sometimes it's an old policy concept that we have talked about in and around and around, over and over again here at the county. But until you all have a vote that says that that's the direction we're going. I would consider this bullet being the same thing. So even if we've talked about it before, even if it's not new, if it is not current policy. Please work with Tanya and if she is not available, the rest of us in order to support you through that process. Thanks.
With that, I've.
Can I just, so we, we have seen this over time, not recently, so I'm not, I don't want to say recent. Staff assistants are here because they have a public servant and a public service heart. And so what we've seen is even through your policy kind of brainstorming with staff assistants. The staff assistants have ran and then talked to department directors. And then department directors call an ACA and say, what are we supposed to be doing? Is this the direction this is going to take? And all of a sudden, I'm, it's this quick spiral, out of control that we need. Then I'm calling you and saying, hold on, let's talk about this. So that, that has happened. It has not happened recently. So this is not a recent and I know I've talked with individual commissioners when this has happened. But Erin and Anne have done a lot of coaching with the staff assistants, like how, how do we work through, through those things?
And I just wanted to.
Smiling because I probably caused one of those.
We all have.
This is, this is how we work together. This is not a.
Well, and I actually just wanted to call out, they, see, we're just going to look at them because they really enjoy it. The staff assistants are actually often at this point, the ones who are saying, I think this one might be jumping the shark. Like, am I, should I take this one? Am I? So, and it doesn't happen often, but I do really appreciate their professionalism and also just trying to make sure that you all get the support you need. But also trying to do a dance for them. That's, can be complicated. So they've done a really nice job.
Uh, email.
Also, sometimes Erin, you're also the policy support.
She is.
Yes. Or Marnie, or Erin.
Totally.
Molly, or Steven, or Tanya. I too, use these tools as part of my work. Moving into email management, this has been an ever fluctuating thing. We are now, I think, to the point where the confidential inbox is now working for all of you. You are all responsible for knowing things are in there. I have yet to talk with Alex about this tool, so I noted that for myself.
Does that mean it's now visible on our mobile devices?
If it's not.
It's not on, you know, yeah, the mobile, you have to put it in Outlook.
You have to use the Outlook app.
But that is now working?
If it's not.
It's not on my mobile.
Okay. We will work on that. We will go back to ITS.
Well, this is where the heads up email really helps me. I just get on my laptop, so I don't need it over here. Just tell me.
Yes.
And I'll take the steps. I, or do you guys need it?
It'd be appreciated, but.
IT showed me a shortcut to bypass that, so maybe they could put it in writing and.
Yeah, I'll work with your staffs.
Without the app.
ITS connect with those that are, are.
There is a way with your device, your mobile to check the inbox.
Okay.
Confidential inbox. So they, they showed me because mine wasn't working, so they had to come into the office.
I don't, I don't see it working in the Outlook app.
I don't, I don't either, but.
You, you four are all Apple devices, right?
No, I've got.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I am.
Yeah. I switched that. Okay, so.
I'm all taken care of.
Good, glad to hear it. And so the, the use of, the use of, having a staff assistant manager in email is an option. It is not an expectation. Some commissioners are more or less comfortable with that. The confidential inbox is intended to be a space where only Tanya and Alex can email into it. It is not just a privileged inbox. I want to be really clear about that. There are other things that come in that are for your eyes only. As you're aware, but other people might not be, the BCC communications list is really big. It includes all five of you, the staff assistants, Tanya, Alex, the ACAs, myself, Kevin and Angie, I think is the.
Philip on there?
And no, Philip is not on there. That is a really big list. It is the most effective way to make sure that each of you have information. So when we share out policy memos and stuff and making sure your staff assistants see it so that they can tell you that something is there. I am included because staff assistants ask me questions about what's this thing? And I was for a little while saying, I don't get those emails. We've now included the ACAs as well, so that way they don't have to be copied on everything. But none of the department directors are on that listserv. Philip is not on that listserv. The confidential inbox is for those things that really should just be between the five of you, your CAO and your general counsel. If something is privileged and is sent to your general inbox and your staff assistant has access, thank you. It's your responsibility to maintain the privilege, but it's also the staff assistant's knowledge to maintain that privilege and to ignore those confidential and privileged emails as well. Each of you gets to set up this system, how it works for you. Some of you, like your inbox managed by other people and others of you feel very comfortable doing it for yourselves. So we've been holding off on that sharing until the confidential inbox has been smoothed out. Do one more round of checks, check-ins and then go back and work with ITS to have your staff assistants that you desire have access to your email.
So, yeah. My staff assistant doesn't have access to any of my email. And, and I just want to make sure that everybody on the BCC list knows that. So that you know that. so that you know that if you really need me to see something, just text me or have Grace text me or just swing by my office and say, read your damn email. That's what my family does.
So we'll continue working through this. It's been a fun
Test confidential email.
People who are, there was a long time ago, but at this point, I'm not allowed to email that.
Okay, Erin, I have a question for you. Full transparency, I think I made the mistake of sending something that meant for something else, somewhere else to the BCC. May I get, I, I was deeply listening to you about the name, the list of names that were
The seventeen people I
Yeah. I was deeply listening, but I've only caught the names that were relevant to me. So could I get the list of the members so that I don't miss? Send it?
Yeah. Yeah. If you click on it, there's a little plus next to it and once you
It'll show you.
It's the CAO, the county council, all the ACAs, all the staff assistants.
My, my executive assistant, Kevin, Angie are on the list.
And then
Can show you how to expand that.
And then the, the, the emails from constituents that's supposed to, used to go to Mary, now go to another.
Mary's still doing the
Still?
And there's, so when a constituent maybe emails you directly instead of using those traditional emails for connection, our staff assistants are in that same system to make sure that things can be moved over and that Mary gets it. But if it is sent just to you and your staff assistant doesn't have access to that email, send it to your staff assistant so that they can work within the CAO constituent report. That's
I think brain caught multiple times.
Yeah.
Oh, then I'm messing up because I'm sending it to Grace and Mary at the same time.
That also works. I'd rather over
Okay.
Than under. If you need a simple
Wanted to have the invitation for, to get the, no, don't do that. Be more effective.
There's one other labor to this that I guess I want to raise that I did talk with county administrator about just when an email is coming into the more generic email boxes, like the district three email box, and it's very obviously like for me, from someone who note, like a city councillor in Toowalatin was an example. And I didn't see the email for like almost fourteen days. I, and I, I just have a request that those get immediately identified and just forwarded to us like they were sent to us to begin with. I don't think it's appropriate for those to be being managed as constituent communication. The only external visible email address on the county website is that address. So some of those are really appropriate, I think, just comes straight to us and I just would make that ask.
So the other thing that I have found help, I push my email address out to the mayors and new mayors multiple times in their first few months. So
When, but when
With city councillors, you should be pushing out your email address to
In this case, I had, and I went to the website and used the district three. Their expectation, I think, is that that goes somewhere that would get to me with a reasonable amount of
I've had the same experience.
I think that's a reasonable expectation too.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll work with the CEO comms, Mary in particular, but Philip as well, to make sure that those protocols are more timely and efficient.
And I'm not asking for every, I'm not asking that every email, but I think it's, the ones I've seen, it's been pretty obvious that it's, you know, someone who knows me.
Yeah. And we are humans and we can, we can pick those things up. So I will talk with Mary and Philip and make sure that those, we've got rules.
We have a bunch of slides.
Yep. That covers constituents. So this is just to clarifying some roles for talking points. The expectation is that regardless of who writes them, your staff assistants have the final review of it to make sure that they're formatted correctly. They can either be the originator, author, or work with subject matter experts. Other events, this is a relatively new change, so I'm just highlighting it here is each of you has either decided to do town halls or you're doing routine meetings where you're going to city councils. This was turning out to add up to a lot of extra staff assistants outside of working hours time. So we've put a restriction on that to one event per quarter, per commissioner outside of office hours. If you did a town hall during the traditional business hours, that's part of their job duties to be there. They can help with logistics of it. They can help set up. So you're, if it's hybrid or whatever, put your PowerPoint together. That's all done during traditional business hours. It's just the attendance at those events can't be mandated outside of one per quarter, per commissioner. For press related matters, staff assistants know, we talk to Philip and Philip finalizes things with your coordination. We don't do the press work on behalf of any of you as staff assistant team. For constituents, we've just talked through that email process. We continue to work with the new system and see those improvements happening. And then for social media, this is an individual choice that each of you can have. We are working with comm staff to make sure that your staff assistants know how to access it. But if you are setting up a Facebook, an official county commissioner Facebook account, ITS needs to be involved in that. CAO's office needs to be, or the communications off department needs to be involved in that. And then your staff assistants can help you manage that. So there we go.
And if you're using your private or your personal Facebook or social media for work, it's on you to make sure you're following Oregon Public Records, which is why I have a county one.
The final big set of paperwork that I am glad someone else can do I learn every time I do it, is the budget tracking for your individual budgets. So this is the, the financial paperwork portion of the, of the job. Obviously, all of you and all of the staff assistants are required to follow the policies of the county for any type of expenditure that's done on using county dollars. But your P cards, your travel authorizations, your reimbursements for expenses that are covered by your budget. This is for your singular budget.
I thought we returned the P card.
Yes. Staff assistants, staff assistants have P cards that they can use for county expenses, including yours. They'll just track those to your accounts as necessary. So if they're reserving a hotel room, they're not, we'll work, they'll work through that P card process. Travel authorizations, there is a process that is set out in county rules. There is a preapproval so that we know what your budget is and making sure we have an estimate of all those expenses and that it fits within the rules of using county funds for travel. And then there is a post authorization. Both of those have to be completed in a timely manner before and after so that we make sure that if there is a per diem, it gets paid out. If there are costs that are outside of that, that ACA gets to make, has to make sure that everything works out and gets signed off on before reimbursements can happen. This and all other reimbursements require receipts, please, for non-per diem. So if they're setting up your travel expenses, they get the receipts. But if they are not and you are collecting receipts for reimbursement during your travels, they need those receipts. That is where they will hound you until said time you provide them.
It's also really complicated. So we, it looks easy on here. It is always complicated. It is always harder than we think it's going to be about what rules are for what expenditures at what point. And I, so if you ever are traveling and you have questions in advance about how or when or why different expenses should be accounted for, we're happy to set up time. Either I can do that support or we can have someone from our purchasing team come in and sit down with you to have that discussion. But it feels like every few years, purchasing rules change in the United States under IRS law. What is considered taxable to you personally versus what is considered something that is covered under your budget? We are talking mostly about things that are covered under your budget. We try and stay within that realm, but it can become a benefit. So we're just trying to make sure that you all stay, stay within that purchasing rule as we hold all other employees to. Thanks.
And this will transition as, it's like I did this on purpose, into the commissioner budget. I did think things through. There are two pieces to the commissioner budget that you are looking at. There's the individual expenses that are, each of you get a slice of. And then there's the shared that kind of sits all together. So individually tracked. This is based on what has been proposed. So in the budget document itself, these numbers are times five because I can do this math by myself. I can divide these by five to set up your individual annual budget.
Two hundred divided by five.
No, that the supplies and food line for you is a thousand dollars for the board, but it is two hundred dollars a piece. That's the math.
You were saying you could do math in it.
I can also divide. It's forty. But, um, so thank you. I delayed long enough to do the math.
Too much transparency.
Yeah. So there are expectations that each commissioner stays within their allotted budgets. Private mileage is based on your driving, there are rules, we'll help you follow them, travel
Oh, yeah, that's the one where it has to be greater than fifty miles, right?
Yeah. Your, your trip to Portland doesn't get you mileage. Your trip to Eugene does.
That's, that's a question that I don't even turn these in because of it. But if it's fifty-five miles, do you get five miles or do you get fifty-five miles?
You would get fifty-five miles, but it still has to be that full distance. You would have to show that the destination is
So Salem is not.
No.
That's, I think that's the key.
I don't know. Border forestry is fifty-two and a half, so.
I thought Salem was fifty-five from here, but not from my, it certainly isn't from my house.
So I also have assumed, so I was on county business in February of twenty twenty and my back windshield was busted. So I don't park in the metro parking garage anymore. And for a while I was, when I had to go to metro meetings, I would only park at the OCC garage. I'm over that. And have been parking on the street. But, you know, you have to pay for it. So for a while I was turning in the receipts for that, but now I just stopped. But does that go expensed under private mileage? I had assumed it had, so I figure I better ask.
So I would say that's probably under your travel expenses. And so we've been billing it there.
Okay.
But the real super secret here is y'all, this is your total budget. And if we decide, if you decide you're not going to do any private mileages here and you instead are going to spend an extra ninety dollars on travel expenses, we've been moving those dollars to things. We really try and keep it within your operations and maintenance budget. We try not to dip into things like personnel costs in order to move those into these types of expenditures. But when we're managing, we're trying to manage to that number, the total number.
And in our, our benefits package, we don't have a car allowance as commissioner.
Don't believe so. Do they have a car? Oh, there you go.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
It's not very much. Okay. So the other question I had, and I should have asked it before we switched to budget, of one thing that I also rely upon with my staff assistant, and I don't, I didn't see it discreetly mentioned at all, or I didn't recognize it. And there are times when I need to send letters to folks. And this isn't the aboard letter, but it's from me. And there are certainly lots of thank you cards. So letter development, that's not the way I describe it. It's not driven by department or service level topics. But my staff assistant helps me with that. Am I doing something wrong?
You are not doing anything wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as they're for county business, absolutely, it's a part of your duties.
Yep, and they get retained
Yep.
copies and all that stuff. But, and there is a postal line item that's shared amongst the board.
On the budget, here, my only comment, and I think maybe it doesn't matter because of what you said around travel, but i- if the private mileage was all sort of driving travel that was over fifty mile, like ninety dollars is like one trip.
Yep.
And, but I think most of that is done for travel reasons. So not all of it, but much of it. And so maybe it just doesn't matter. To your point, you're, we're just trying to stick within, okay.
Yeah, so an example would be, I've had council members that I've worked with who really like going to AOC events or really like going to local OCCMA, whatever the local meetings are, they go to four a year. And those do add up, but there's no flights. So they're driving to and from a lot into far reaches of the state. And in that cases, we just put those straight to travel expenses.
And private mileage is one of the categories on your travel expense form. So it is your pro, your travel authorization form, so it does get caught there. But again, you have four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars total to work with as a commissioner. Yeah, I did sound that well.
To be perfect.
It could be like twenty minutes.
I didn't even bother
Yeah.
Yeah. Sisters for the AOC.
Yeah, and I mean, there, you get to make some of those choices, but this is the account that we have for you to do your, your individualized business. That is the budget that you will be approving next week. Any other complaints about the size of it, that is a conversation for your board to have.
And I think it's an interesting observation I would just also make generally that this is, like on the travel side of this, this is much smaller than most city councillors, even in smaller cities in Washington County. Just an observation.
So then we touched on this topic a few years ago, but because of the budget situation, chose to not go there. We haven't updated the private mileage amount in a long time. We haven't necessarily revisited these, the amount, like car, the car allowance one.
With the budget where we're at, like, I don't, I don't, I'm not suggesting a change. I guess I'm just making an observation.
That's the hard part. We've, we're so far behind to actual costs, but
We actually have done some homework on this. So we have some numbers at a point that you all do want to have this discussion that we can bring forward about different ways we could structure how much money we put into this budget. But again, as you said, we, we've just reduced budgets for everyone and yeah, for five years in a row.
Well, we should at least go over it in a future round table so that we're looking at it with eyes wide open because you will have to commission, different commissioners in twenty twenty-seven and
Well, and we're having revenue conversations, so we, we will hopefully be in a different position in the next eight, two months to two years. But that'll be at your action.
I did, I just want to point out
Your point, just on that, I would suggest that we just plan to have this conversation as part of the budget setting direction to the county administrator because it seems this conversation comes off cycle sometimes with, with the budget planning. And as Ms. Ober said, we've been doing some homework internally, you know, just to look at as we place or dice these, these costs, what does that mean to an actual conference or in-state or outstate? You know, how do we look at that? Because
Logistically, I would like us to get familiar with that modern data before we go into the October, November, December budget framing stuff. I just, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. Put that together.
So I'd like, and one point of clarification, and I believe this to be true, that the salary commission is actually where the car allowance sits.
No, salary is the only compensation.
Only salary.
So we direct the car allowance for that, in that piece. Is that correct?
Part of the general
It's our discretion in the budget. It should be here then.
Well, so we, your These are optional choices that you make in order to, these are individual choices per commissioner.
And the rea, the reason I bring it up is that my experience has been that if you get a car allowance, you don't get my, local mileage. So they are, they work in tandem together. So that's why our private mileage might be smaller because we get a car allowance. And I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're talking in those terms that, and that's why they, they do work in tandem.
So we will bring that forward into the same discussion that you all have requested because it also, your car allowance aligns with director car allowance and other car allowances that we provide. And we can bring that policy forward for
Thank you.
Last slide. This is the combined rolled up. I, I did have to do other math, but I used a computer. So obviously, the biggest expense that you all provide as part of your budget is to the internal services, just like every other department. So, um, obviously the biggest expense that you all provide as part of your budget is to the internal services, just like every other department. Um, I want to be really clear on this. The services, professional services line item that is a shared BCC expense is about the, um, the work of, um, your management of the CAO and the general counsel. So those services pay for the system by which you do your reviews of both of them. That is where it sits this year.
And I am proposing that we actually move it. So it is not sufficient to cover your annual review process. And what's been happening, um, over the last year is that we have been using these funds and then supplementing these funds out of other budgets. Uh, the two employees that you're currently reviewing are the CAO and the county council. We would recommend that we split that money between the two offices next year and that they cover the remainder of the difference. So the twenty-six will show up thirteen and the CAO budget, CAO budget thirteen and county council. And then we will cover those contracts for your annual reviews.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then also, the other purpose of this is it gets to a true cost of service. Like what is the cost of each of the offices as we look at our internal service charges?
And, uh, in past years, in our early years together, we actually had, uh, can, uh, outside consultant contractor, uh, for some board development as well. And I think we should forecast that as a need certainly in twenty twenty-seven. Um, but I'm also thinking in our remainder eighteen months, it's not necessarily a bad idea either. But, um, with budget situation, not sure about it.
And then my final point on this slide is one that is a balance between your individually tracked budgets and the shared items. There is a constant contact subscription that the, uh, CAO's office has that mean, that Kevin maintains and uses for purposes of pushing out agendas. Um, other commissioners have paid for specific, um, their own constant contact subscriptions. We have been pulling that out of the shared items moving forward. If a commissioner wants a constant contact but does not want to pull it out of their individual budgets, it is possible to use the constant contact subscription. There is room in the subscription to have your individualized lists, um, for purposes of using it, um, something that is accessible to more than just your staff assistant and you. If you want to use that, piggyback off that, um, shared subscription, we can make that work and your staff assistants will be able to access it. But anybody who's in that system can see, um, what's being done with that portion of the constant contact. If you do not want to be part of that joint work, we will work with your staff assistant to pull it out of your individualized four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Um, so that is a conversation for you to have with your staff assistants moving forward for how you would like to proceed with how you manage your individual budget. If you want to pull that communications thread out of that shared subscription and pay for it individually out of your, um, limited budget, that is allowable. It just reduces the amount you'll have available for training, education, travel and, um, foods. If you want to use the, the county's CAO shared, um, subscription, there's room for it. It just means the information is accessible to more than just your staff assistant. Um, but it's our, it can be covered as part of a shared cost as through this manner.
I think we need to have a deeper discussion.
Yeah.
You too. It, it's.
It got.
Weird to be.
Because there's both obeying Oregon public meeting laws.
Yeah.
But also if a constituent says they want to be part of that list, does that mean, you know, I'm just going to use you as an example. They want to be notified about Pam's town halls. That may be that they don't want to start re, they want, they don't want to be automatically opted in for other people's town halls. But just.
You can maintain multiple lists for opting into.
So this brain can't deal with the detail here.
All right.
Going to have to come back to it another day is what I'm trying to illustrate. But, uh, part of the options need to list out, what does it mean for constituents? What does it mean for each of us as one of five?
And to be really fair, this has been complicated for us as well. So.
I was about to do that.
Yep.
So this was the last slide and the last item.
Yep.
So that's why I wasn't nervous, but, um, do you guys have anything else? Okay.
We appreciate that.
Um, so, uh, back to the time management problem. Uh, I don't know how to solve it, right?
You need to go now. I think we come back for lunch, from lunch at twelve thirty.
Or, or can we come back from lunch at twelve o'clock? And, oh, no, sorry, brain thing, Catherine. Okay, twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty will be convenient and we'll start with the eleven o'clock issue.
Yep.
Yeah, and, yeah, okay. Got it. Just tell me. Thank you. I had to catch up. A deep breath, Catherine. You caught up. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you back here at twelve thirty.